Next on our list are our citizen comments, and we do have some individuals. Would you please step forward as your name is called? You'll have three minutes to address county council. The first one is Inez Miller. Good evening.
Members of council, my name is Inez Miller. I'm a resident of St. Helena Island. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here tonight with some of my younger seniors, younger than I am, that are here from the St. Helena Senior Center. And I'm asking you to consider not putting us on the PALS or Love House Christian Center, Love House Center, because we'd like to stay. We were at Beaufort Jasper Comprehensive Clinic on St. Helena. The senior center is a part of that building, and we would like to remain the way we are and not be put on the PALS. PALS is not good for the residents of St. Helena in keeping up their buildings, particularly Gloria Park Center. I'm a pole worker there. That's the only time that center seems to operate. I can't even wash my hands there because the stench that comes from the water. They get a report on this, I think, for the past seven years, facilities maintenance. Nothing has been done along with other things. I also ask that if you have any monies to give the community, that you please consider the seniors at St. Helena Center or seniors everywhere, please consider us CARES Act monies, whatever monies, please consider giving us some of those funds. And do please, again, do not allow Parks and Leisure to take over our senior center or Love House Ministry and try to upgrade our centers to where they are nice, beautiful buildings like they have over in Bluffton and Hilton Head. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Anita Prather or Prather.
Well, good evening, good evening, good evening. Just want to make it official that the Gullah, the original Gullah Festival of South Carolina is returning after a two-year hiatus from COVID. We've been working hard to make sure that it's a festival that's inclusive of all of our citizens as well as our visitors. So this year, the fencing is coming down. Hallelujah. Glad about that, but just to let you know, inflation is going up. So, but we want to make sure that everybody knows that they're invited to come. It's Memorial Day weekend, Decoration Day. That was the original festival that began the Gullah Festival. And so we want to make sure that you come out, support it. It starts on May 27th through the 29th. Don't forget, the parade is back this year on that Monday, and military services in the cemetery. But again, we want to make sure that you get the word out to everybody that everybody is welcome to come. We're looking for volunteers. We're looking for sponsorship. We're looking for sponsorship. We're looking for sponsorship. But anyway, God bless. Thank you all for your service. Get the word out. Please pass it, send it on all your social media. Tell folks, come on to Beaufort, South Carolina, because this is the place to be for Memorial Day weekend, Decoration Day. God bless. Thank you.
Mr. Prather, before you leave, Mr. Prather.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave.
You gonna give us a hundred thousand? Yes, sir.
Would love for you to just make comment about Sierra Leone.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. We had the opportunity, the Gullah Traveling Theater, to be invited by the mayor of Free Town in 2019 to come and be part of their celebration over there. And we met some wonderful young people that were college students who had completed three years in tourism. They're going to be the first graduating class of tourism majors. And just, I mean, fell in love with them. They were our interns and our guides as part of the 10 days that we were over there. We've been trying to get them here since 2020, before we knew COVID. Well, COVID came and that kind of put a stop on everything, but we've been back and forth with Dr. Panu at USC B about getting them here to finish up their tourism program and to really work on that international tourism between Sierra Leone, West Africa, the Barbados and the West Indies, Trinidad, and Nova Scotia, and Beaufort, South Carolina. So we're finally getting them here after a lot of prayer and some more prayer and some more prayer. They will be here on May 26th, and they will be our guests until June the 9th. So we want Beaufort, that you all will give them the key to the county, to the city, and just open your arms, because they were so welcoming to us over there, and they're looking forward to us bringing others to Sierra Leone, and they're coming. And so this is going to be a great stepping stone for us. I never seen young people so excited about learning about what happened to us, their education, a lot of them. Sometimes we talk about candle lights and lanterns, but that's what they literally study from. Even when COVID set in, they went online and started finding classes and modules that they're not going to even get grades for. That's just how hungry they are about this history. And so I think it'll be a great inspiration for our young people who take so much for granted here, to hear the stories of young people who survived the Civil War over there and still have this thirst for learning, thirst for heritage, and such a pride in it. So please, come out and meet our young people. God bless. Thank you.
Next is Jay Edward Allen.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of council. First, I'm going to deviate a little bit. I would like, we just recognized Mr. Wash, I mean, just recognized Roland Gardner. But I would be remiss, as chairman of the board for Beaufort Jasper Hampton Comprehensive Health, if I don't introduce our new executive officer, Dr. Faith Pokey. She looks a whole lot better than rope. And she is a low country girl from Charleston, so she's at home. But my reason for appearing before you is that when we look around, obviously, y'all can tell I'm gray-headed, I'm old, looking at the, oh, I'm not going to say that, but there are a few people up there that look a little bit like me. But the first person that came up was talking about the senior citizen center at the Leroy Brown on St. Helena Island and the importance of that center to our seniors. My 95-year-old mother was attending that, and when we had to shut the center down because of COVID, I saw what it did in terms of the decline in her mental status. And a lot of that was because of the lack of socialization that we had at that center. Please try your level best to keep that facility open. Continue the bond that you have with Beaufort Jasper Hampton Comprehensive Health in utilizing that facility for those members of our society that need that and need that socialization. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is Mitch Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Pastiment, council members, staff, those of us present and also participating virtually. I'm Mitch Mitchell, City Councilman-at-Large, City of Beaufort. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the reading, or the naming of the Charles Lynn Brown Community Center Pool, AKA Green Street Gym, in honor of Mr. Alvin Settles. While there's much I could say about Mr. Settles, I did read the resolution that was shared with me by Mr. Chuck Atkinson, and I think that covers it very adequately and beautifully. So I'll save the reading of that for later when it comes up. I wish to thank the county administrator and his assistant, Chuck Atkinson, for fast-tracking this. I think it was fast-tracked, maybe it's just normal business here at the county. But in any event, we had a conversation about a month and a half ago, and I asked Mr. Greenway and Mr. Atkinson to move this forward. I did not know the process. He shared it with me. So at this time, I'd also like to thank the Community Services Committee for recommending, what I understand was unanimously, that this come before you. So what I'd like to ask you this evening is that you do the same, that you approve it unanimously. Mr. Settles was a, was born in Aiken, South Carolina, but he's a true Beaufortonian. He spent 30-plus years teaching in the DOD school system at Lower Bay. But more importantly, and why I'm here before you this evening, is that he spent the rest of his time in the pool, teaching the life-saving skill and the fun-loving skill of swimming. So much of that time that he spent in the pool was obviously taken away from his lovely wife, Gloria, sitting right here behind me. So I hope that we don't disappoint her. I spoke with her this morning, and she was very excited about that, very thankful for the way the process has been moving forward. I think this will be an easy one. So again, I ask your unanimous approval. I think maybe after the resolution that Mr. Settles, maybe her daughter would like to make comments, and my senior woman, don't tell me, I'm right here. Kristen may want to come up and make remarks. So again, I thank you very much for allowing my, this opportunity for me to speak to the Spurs. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to the committee reports. Any member of council wish to talk about their committees?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCollum.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make a brief statement. We had a presentation at the Community Services from the new manager of Hunting Island State Park. It was a very informative and descriptive discussion of what's happening out there. I think that everyone who is interested in going to that state park would be happy to hear the report, and it may serve as an invitation to others who hadn't, had not even considered going there. So I asked the Public Information Officer for the county to prepare the press release, which I saw that he did, and it was distributed. And we also asked the county channel to videotape the presentation. So if any members of council who were not at the Community Services meeting or anyone in the audience tonight here at the council chambers or in the fellow who's in the audience who wish to see that presentation on the great improvements that have occurred in Hunting Island State Park, you can go to the county channel, and you will find that video in the archives. I encourage you to have a look at it. It's extremely informative and give you a good idea of what you can expect to have happen out there during the summer season. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Howard.
Yes, sir. I attended the Town of Port Royal's budget workshop and their workshop last Wednesday. They are looking at a 5.9 COLA for their employees for next year. Also, the sands boat landing, the parking area is being restripped. It'll probably be done maybe by Thursday. And also, I'd like to share with the public that the sands will remain open. There is some discussion about who owns the boat landing itself, but that is going to be worked out. And we met today actually with the parties involved, and we're working on getting that solved. But the sands will be maintained and will be open until, as long as, as long as necessary, until we get all the intergovernmental agreements done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rodman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Public Facilities, a week from today, we will be receiving a presentation on the, from the Citizens Committee on the possibility of the One Penny Transportation referendum, probably around four o'clock. It's tentatively scheduled for that. So I think that'll be important and of interest to a lot of people, so we look forward to everybody tuning in.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee will meet before Public Facilities next Tuesday, next Monday at 2:00. We'll have our normal presentations, and I think the Sheriff's Department is presenting at that time, which everyone likes to see that, as we get closer to our fiscal year '23 approved budget.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we're now ready to move to the public hearings and action items. As we discussed, we are rearranging the agenda, so we're going to take up item number 17. So I would ask a member of council for a motion to approve of a resolution to name the Lynn Brown Recreation Center Outdoor Pool in honor of Mr. Alvin Settles.
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to make that motion. Thank you very much.
Mr. McCollum.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved unanimously without objection, and there are no objections. Congratulations. Mrs. Settle, did you want to say something?
Yes, sir, please.
Please come forward.
To all council members and everyone else who's here, but particularly those who have worked on this, it means so much to me, but I cannot say it's just me. My, my daughter's here, but so many of the people who have supported Alvin throughout the years, who have gone there with their children or have taken classes themselves are here as well. He has been in the pool more than anything else. He loved it, even though he had a job that he loved. I think if someone was, he could work year-round at the pool with the children and, and the whole community, he would have done that, because that was his heart. He loved it from the beginning. Before, before we got married, he was talking about swimming, and he also loved swimming himself, and he wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to learn how to swim, both children and adults. So just having this done is just wonderful. He, I know he, he loves to sing and he loves to talk, so I know he's just, just really joyful today for this happening. So I just really wanted to thank you all. I want to thank councilmen here, but also all of you and anyone else who had anything to do with this, because it is a real, real blessing. But I am so, so, so happy about it, and I thank all the people of Beaufort County and whoever you brought to the pool when he was there working, because it was all fun for him. So thank you very much. I appreciate the work done, because now everybody will know of my husband, Alvin Settles. And it was a year in April that he passed, so in case somebody didn't want to know where he is, if you did not meet him before. But he is even more happier now because I am as well. Thank you very much.
Next, Arne.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'd make a brief.
Hold on a second, Mr. Somerville, Mr.?
I follow Mr. Somerville.
Go ahead, Mr. Somerville.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's going to be very brief. I just want to say that I don't know how many of you have ever tried to teach your children how to swim. I did, and I was a miserable failure. I was a lifeguard, and I'm a pretty good swimmer, but that didn't seem to matter. I was a miserable failure teaching my children. So somebody introduced me to Alvin Settles, and he was a godsend. He taught both my daughters to swim. One of them went on to be a lifeguard for two years, and both of them swim like porpoises. And so I just want to say thank you. He was a, now he's a great man, he's a great teacher. Thank you.
Where he had his children, Alvin actually had my grandkids and my nephew, and they are true swimmers today because of him. So I just want to publicly say thank you and thank you to your daughter, Kristen, as well.
Mr. Jim. Mr. Dawson.
Mrs. Settles, we thank you for the time, the service, the love that Alvin showed to the Beaufort City community. We thank you for the time that he spent away from you and his dedication to the community, to children in general. And, and I just regret that we didn't give him some recognition before he expired, but on his, on behalf of council, we say thank you for your belated husband, Alvin. Thank you. God bless you.
Okay. Item number 11 is the approval of our consent agenda. I would ask a member of council to make a motion for approval of the four items coming from Community Services and Public Safety, the Executive Committee, and the Natural Resources Committee.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rodman makes the motion. A second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? I see no discussion, therefore, the consent agenda will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Item number 12 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to allocate 2018 One-Cent Sales Tax additional revenue to the Sidewalks and Multi-Use Pathways Program in the amount of $15,449,734.75. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion. Mr. Cunningham made the second. Before I go to council, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Are there any comments by any member of council? Mr. Rodman.
Yes, it's, the history of the pathways is that we put an item on the last referendum, and it was in the amount of $10 million. And we had listed on there a series of projects to draw from, and the number of projects that were listed was much greater than the $10 million that was available. So I've been a strong and early proponent that if we added extra money, we should certainly use that for the pathways. However, I'm not convinced that we should take all of the $16 million and increase the $10 million from, to $26 million. And I'd asked at the last meeting that we get an update on what monies might be required for the Ladies Island part of the project, which we know does not have enough money, and certainly the corridor project. I don't know if that's available, but if it's not, perhaps we could take that up at Public Facilities next Monday and get an overview of that. So not, don't want to hold it up, but I do think that, I'm not convinced that we should put 100% of the money into pathways.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCollum.
Mr. Rodman, did you indicate it was $10 million plus $16 million for total of $26?
Yes, that's correct. Be correct.
The original amount of money in the sales tax referendum back in 2018 was $10 million for the pathways. It wasn't nearly enough. This will be an additional $15.5 million towards the completion of the remaining projects that were on that list. Does that answer your question, Mr. McCollum?
Is any of that money being made available for the corridor project with regard to the building, the stony area, making it, making it a better?
No, no. The stony project is a part and parcel of the bridge project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we need a roll call vote, or are you going? Okay. So then this will be approved by unanimous vote, and I see no objections. Therefore, the item number 12 is approved as written. Item number 13, I ask a member to make a motion for the first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Sections in Division 3.2 and Sections in Division 3.3, to correct and clarify parking space requirement conflicts between zoning districts and the parking space requirements table in Section 5.5 dot 40 point B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please. Mr. Rodman makes the second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the first reading will be approved unanimously without objection, and I see no objections. Item 14, ask a member to approve a first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Appendix A dot 13 dot 50 dot D, to clarify the standards for minimum lot size requirements for guest houses located in the May River Community Preservation District.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Lawson makes the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir?
Rob is here, so I, I was reading through some of it, and I ran across south, south of, and I don't have it with me, I left at home a copy of it, but south of a highway of some sort. And my question is, why south of that highway? No, if, if, and I may be, I hope I'm speaking to the right code at this time.
Yes, yeah, it has to do with the May River Community Preservation Area. And that was a, that came out of our community preservation program. So the community along the May River Corridor came up with standards, and one of the things that they chose to do is to have, there's some different standards that apply to south of Highway 46 or May River Road, because that area is closer to the May River, and they wanted to protect the, the water. So there's a, there's a lower density there than north of May River.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Merchant. Any further discussion? This item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 15 is a first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Section 6 dot 1 dot 40 dot G, to clarify that both jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional wetlands must be subtracted from the gross site area to determine base site area for development. A motion, please.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Item number 16 is a first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Section 5 dot 11 dot 100 dot F dot 1, to close a loophole which allows specimen and mitigation trees to be removed post-construction of single-family homes.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
Second it.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Any discussion?
I have one discussion, not on the motion itself, so, but it does have to do with specimen trees. And I would just love for staff to, to look at the pine species as specimen trees. And the reason I'm saying that is because, you know, oak trees, when they get, you know, 30-inch in diameter, they're going to be here three, four, five, six, maybe a thousand years. But pine trees has maturity, and once they reach that maturity, they really should be removed. And I just wonder why we keep putting pine trees on that specimen tree. Maple trees and other trees are one thing, but pine trees, even, even, um, bald cypress, you know, will be around for a while, but pine trees, once they reach a maturity, that's, that's the life of that pine tree. I think, and, you know, they need to come down. So I just want them to look at that as, and they can talk to some foresters and other folks and stuff, to see whether they should have some kind of guidelines on pine trees.
Can I make a comment? I, I don't disagree with you, but I do.
I, I, I don't disagree with you, but I do disagree about which type of pine trees, because longleaf pine have at least a hundred-year lifespan, and they're very important to endangered species such as the red cocated woodpecker. But I think it'd be a great thing to bring up at Natural Resource Committee. Maybe we can look at specific species.
I agree. Joe just. Well, we'll work with the, we'll work with the State Forestry Commission and Amanda Flank and have a report back to you.
Okay.
Mr. Lawson.
And just to piggyback, I wasn't gonna bring it up, I'm glad you did, York, because, um, yeah, that's what caused all the damage during Hurricane Matthew, was all the lob lolly pines that came down. Wasn't the, wasn't the rain, wasn't the winds, it was the trees. And my backyard is a perfect example, lived in the same neighborhood for twenty-six years now. The little tree that was this big around twenty-six years ago, now is a specimen tree, and it's not getting any bigger, and I guarantee you it's gonna come down on my house the next hurricane. So, um, I agree with the, and I, I agree with the, the pine tree, and I also agree with the long leaf pine as well. But yeah, that's what caused us all the damage in Hurricane Matthew, was pine trees coming down.
Okay. Any other discussion? So this will be approved on first reading without objection, but we will get some more updates as we move along before we have the final reading of the ordinance. There are no objections, so item number sixteen is approved at first reading. Our final item is approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and fund the purchase of real property consisting of approximately two-point-one acres owned by the Technical College of the Low Country. May I have such a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion, and Ms. Howard makes the second. Are there any discussion?
Yeah, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I put it on, so I could see you, Mr. Flouelling.
Thank you. I, uh, I, I, I'm conflicted about this, because I certainly understand that, uh, that the media has been playing up a shortage of housing in, in, uh, in Beaufort County, and there may very well be confused to that. I think, uh, we have some documentary evidence and outside counsel saying that, that we have such a problem. I'm, I'm worried about the effect of Beaufort County being involved in what is essentially an, uh, an exercise in free markets, and I think that our heavy hand, um, the, the, the power of Beaufort County first, um, would really get in the way of private investment. And I think when we, when we use government funds and remove private investment, we remove the opportunity for individual people to, to, um, you know, our citizens, our actual paying, tax-paying citizens, making the kind of money that's necessary to improve their lives. I'm gonna vote against this, just on principle. I don't like the government competing with private citizens, and, um, I think it's just, it's wrong. And so I'm gonna vote against this, please count me as a no, but other than that, you can go ahead.
Any other questions? Mr. Lawson, and then Mr. Cunningham.
Uh, yes, I voted against this last time. I will, I will vote for it this time. Um, I still think this might not be the best place for affordable housing, even if it gets upzoned to the IC zoning, that only allows to have twenty units total, um, at, at ten per acre, uh, which I think we'd have a difficult time doing that. You take the purchase price of, of six hundred thousand per acre, it, that really adds a lot to the, the cost. But I think the property is worth that amount, and if we can find a way to do affordable housing, I think that's great. If we can't, I know that the property will be, uh, will find a useful use for it, uh, at some other point.
Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is one of the things, um, that council's been talking about for years now, um, and I feel like we're starting to make some progress in it, starting to feel like, what direction do we want to take? Um, the, the goal is to make some form of this, um, to be used for affordable housing. Doesn't mean we're gonna develop this property ourselves. Um, it doesn't mean we're not gonna sell it to, um, put it out to bid, to sell it for our company, to put affordable housing in there. Um, a lot of discussions we've had on county councils, what type of affordable housing, um, options we're looking for. Me personally, um, I, I look for something that is either, um, a mix of whether it is rental and lease-to-own homes, or lower income for purchasing, for workforce housing, um, 'cause my goal behind it isn't necessarily for somebody to move there and stay, it is more to move there, better your life, and move on to the next level, level. And the reason I go into, um, of purchasing is because right now, this is a prime market of that. You have a lot of people that purchased homes years ago, and they're getting their investments back and flipping over to another piece of property and taking advantage of that market. When you go into rental property, you don't get to capitalize on that. So I want to be able to create that opportunity for people in Beaufort County. Um, we know we need a forms of workforce housing. I have tons of employees right now that are, they room together, or they're still living at home for this reason right here. Um, so this is something that we need to start, you know, chipping away at. You've heard me stand, stand up here before and say that I'm against rezoning for big apartment complexes, 'cause I think we're gonna be chasing the tail again in five years. Every time those, um, agreements are up, the rent goes right back up, and we do it over again, and investing that money over again and just chasing the tail. Um, I think this is a good start for us to be able to, you know, lock down the property and put it out for bid possibly in the future, to see what's the best outcome for all of Beaufort County. Um, we have a lot of schools, we have a lot of people that work for Beaufort County, um, our hospitals, that this is prime location for something along those lines.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make a statement? Mr. Glover.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm gonna support this motion. And, and the, the reason being is that Beaufort County has really created a monster in, in the housing market, um, over the years, and, uh, I, I can tell you that if I didn't build my house in the seventies, I don't think I could afford to build a house today, uh, because of, of this market. Sometimes the government, uh, need to really step in to assist in that. And if we go on to continue to grow in Beaufort County, uh, we cannot bring folks in from Hampton County and Collison County to work here, we gotta also combat that with help and assistance in affordable housing. So that's why I'm gonna support this motion here, because I think we need to commit ourselves and put our, uh, as old folks used to say, uh, uh, the money where our mouth is, and that's what, what I'm hoping that we're doing right here, to make it available for some affordable use. Thank you.
Mr. Rodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In general, I agree with Brian that this is not what we should be in, but I think we have an indication here that this could be channeled to, uh, workforce housing for the hospital, given where they, where it's located, so I am in favor of it. However, under the theory, if it walks like a duck and it looks like it, and quacks like a duck, it just may be one, we're appropriating money here. I believe it requires three readings and, and a public hearing.
Is that a motion?
No, I stayed with, I don't believe you can do this.
A requirement, yeah. It's not a motion, it's a requirement.
Yeah, it's a requirement.
You are, you, you have already appropriated the money through the necessary readings through a budget amendment.
Yes.
We are bringing this, uh, back as just a safeguard move to allow you all to approve the resolution for us to actually go ahead for the purchase of the property, which is what we typically do with purchase of property.
So was, was this identified by, for these five sites in, in a appropriation?
Yeah.
If I stand corrected, then if we.
We've, we've discussed this, um, this, this purchase several times.
So, but the, these three properties were, three readings and a public hearing?
Yeah, the, the money, the money.
Not the money, but whether these were specifically.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Kurt and, uh, Brittany Ward weigh in on that, uh, they got more experience with this than I, but, uh, this is the process that, uh, the legal department, uh, advised me that we needed to follow. So Brittany, you wanna take that?
Apparently not.
Scared her away. Thank you, Brittany.
Okay, my apologies. Um, the ordinance was passed with a budget amendment for the allocation of the funds, which is the ordinance section of having, uh, purchase of the property. And the state code requires a public hearing, um, therefore, this resolution is being brought in front of you today for the administrator to have the, um, authority to sign the documents. As I stated, the funds have already been appropriated the right way through the three order, three readings in the ordinance, and the public hearing will be held as well.
Okay.
I have one last comment. Um, as, as most people know how I stand about affordable housing and hopefully the establishment of a Affordable Housing Trust Fund for our county in Jasper, this, um, site is in my district, and also, uh, this was TCL property, it had to be sold to local governments, so there was not an opportunity for it to be sold on the open market. I think this, uh, as Councilman Cunningham said, it's a unique opportunity where we might be able to do something with, um, a lease-to-own, and it's in a part of the city of Beaufort that lends itself to, um, being able to do things like walk to work and other, or ride your bike to work, or other methods of, um, being in an urban environment, which is another good thing for workforce housing.
Thank you. Mr. Hervishon.
Thank you. Just a, a question in the comments, just so I'm a hundred percent clear, at Mr. Rodman's point, we've, this will be the fourth time that we vote on this with these properties specifically identified?
They were identified through, um, an ordinance for the budget amendment, and it was for property acquisition.
I'm, I'm not gonna say it was the fourth time, because I think we added these after first reading to the budget amendment process, so this would be probably, it would be, it would be like the third time that you've seen it and you saw it in executive session as well.
Okay, appreciate that. My comment would just be, I've voted against this the whole way through, I'm gonna continue to vote against this. I don't believe that this is an appropriate use of, uh, government funds. I don't think that we should be sticking ourselves in the middle of what I view to be a, um, private enterprise-type responsibility, so for those reasons, I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay. Who hasn't spoken yet? Mr. Flouelling, your comment.
Uh, not a comment, actually a question. I'm wondering, uh, as I drive by this property, and I do, and I have often over the years, it's been rented, these various properties are rented out to, um, to individual people, what's gonna happen to those people and the rent that they're paying? Or have they been empty for some short period of time?
Yeah, I believe they're vacant.
It was in December.
They've been vacant since December.
December, okay.
But we, we can, uh, we can, uh, you know, make sure that we, uh, do, once the purchase goes through, we can make sure that we do necessary work, and there's no reason for us to let the houses sit there vacant. Uh, we can, we can rent them out until we figure out the plan for, uh, for what we're gonna do with them, uh, as well, working with the, we're, we're currently, uh, discussing options with the housing authority, uh, and looking at, and exploring other options that we'll bring back to you all in more detail down the road.
Wow, all right, thank you.
Okay, let's, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Yes.
Okay. I'm still confused about what Brittany said, whether we do or don't have to have a public hearing, and I'm also, it's not clear to me that we did an appropriation that specifically mentioned these properties, which I would guess that we have to do. If I stand corrected, if, if these properties were listed, but I sure don't remember it.
Yes, the ordinance did list on the budget amendment ordinance that was approved, um, I believe at the last council hearing, our meeting, it states specifically, uh, the five properties.
Okay, I, I stand corrected.
Yeah.
That was done on April, I think April eighteenth.
Okay.
Yes, very.
There it is. Okay. Uh, Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion, you get to vote first.
I'll start you off with a yes.
Hold on a second, so if we, if we might, hold on. As I'm reading that, it doesn't specifically identify the properties. That is not sufficient as an identification adjacent to TCL and Reba Road. That's not specifically identifying property that the county is intending to purchase. This is insufficient to its purpose, this, this thing we're doing now.
It was well-defined when we discussed it.
Yeah, you know, you discuss it, it's gotta be published. It's gotta be public. This is, this is really nebulous and undefined.
If you all wanna do.
No. So here's the thing, I mean, you know, we, we've, we've did numerous presentations of these five properties. We even showed pictures of, of these properties to you all. We put the amount in the budget amendment, which is what we had to do. The resolution, I haven't seen the resolution, um, but I'm sure the resolution, since it was done by our legal department, does the appropriate identification of what you're authorizing me to purchase. Um, if I'm incorrect about that, then we would, we can go back and, and bring it back and redo it to get you the detail that you need, so that you all can vote on it, uh, and feel comfortable with it.
Well, if I, if I might argue, contrary opinion, Mr. Chairman, it's, the purpose of, um, what we've done before is to make the funds available. It was like a, that money, that one-point-two, um, million dollars, or one-point-one-two million dollars, or two-one-five dollars that we have, was, um, not available in the budget. Now, when you purchase, when we purchase a piece of property, we're required to name the property and identify the source of funds. And so, you know, that the funds are available doesn't mean that's necessarily the source of funds. The purpose of this whole exercise is to name the property and identify the source of funds, which we have not done sufficiently in three readings and a public hearing. That's all there is. And I may be wrong, as, as Stu Rodman likes to say, I may be wrong, and I'll stand corrected.
Okay. All right, we, we have a motion and second on the floor. We will be taking action, uh, seeing no further comments.
So, so you're saying that you're, you're overruling our objections, are they here? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
It's, okay.
Yeah.
So you've overruled our, my objection and Stu's.
Yes.
All right.
I think I need to get a legal opinion here from, from one of the county attorneys, uh, about what's going on here. I'd like for somebody to say emphatically from the legal department that what we're doing is legal and that there are no issues.
Mr. Taylor.
Kurt, you wanna answer that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I state emphatically that what we're doing is legal and it's complete and definite, it might come their way.
Okay. He said he, he's declaring emphatically that, oh, what we've done is legal.
What was after that?
Kurt, can you state it again, please? It seemed like you were muffled. Mr. Taylor? Okay, all right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just need to plug in my headphones. Uh, as Mr., uh, Greenway requested, I am stating emphatically that what we are doing is legal and it is proper, and you have properly identified the funding source and the properties to be purchased.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion, you get to vote first.
I will start you off with a yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard, you made the second.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Somerville. You're on mute. You're still on mute.
I don't think you heard you, Jim.
I'll come back to him. Mr. Glover.
Yes.
Mr. Hervishon.
No.
Mr. Rodman.
I'll, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Mark Lawson, yes.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Yes.
Mr. Flouelling.
No.
Mr. Somerville.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so we have nine yes and two no. That motion passes. We are at the second citizens' comments. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a comment? Seeing none.
Before you, before you get ready to adjourn, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I, I, I don't know, um, just looking at the, uh, budget numbers that, um, were sent out by PINKY, and, um, the coroner is, woo, uh, we're gonna get a, a, a hearing from the coroner's office?
Um, I'm trying to think if they're coming Monday or not. I'll find out if we can, we'll, we'll get them there.
Yeah, I just wanna know why the increase, um, it's.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
We, we added a pathologist to the coroner's office to. We, we added a pathologist to the coroner's office to fulfill a facility that he's had in the coroner's office for about seven years that has gone unused. It will ultimately result, we feel like, in a cost savings, particularly to our citizens of the county, because autopsies, autopsies can be performed much quicker locally here instead of the bodies having to be shipped off to MUSC and the, the work done there, and then reports coming back.
Towards the cost of setting that whole up, I mean, that whole.
Hiring the pathologist, yes, sir. And I can send you all, I will send you all a detailed synopsis that goes through the cost savings that will likely be incurred as a result of this, so we'll explain it in more detail.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Okay.
If I may, one.
Yes, sir.
Sure thing, because folks were here tonight to talk about the senior programming at Beaufort Comp Health Building. We have no plans to depart and not offer senior programming at that facility. We are going to budget the funds necessary to rent the building where the senior programming is currently occurring there with Beaufort Jasper Comp Health, and we're providing the funding for the supplies so that there will be no disruption in the senior programming at that facility by the St. Helena Library in the Beaufort Jasper Comp Health Building.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Greenway.
Okay, there be no further action. The county council meeting of this evening is adjourned at 7:22.